Good evening, welcome to the November twenty-seventh, two thousand and twelve meeting of the East Hampton School Committee. We will begin with announcements, and the first announcement I need to make is that, as you can tell if you're viewing this, this meeting's being recorded by the East Hampton Public Access Cable Station. Superintendent Follins, would you do the other announcements, please?
Thank you. The next school committee meetings are December eleventh, January eighth, and January twenty-second, two thousand and thirteen. There is no school December twenty-fourth through January first due to winter break. School will reopen on Wednesday, January second, two thousand and thirteen. I also have another very exciting announcement. Three students, Connor Gibbs for chorus, Brandon Page for jazz trombone, and Leo Fish for jazz trombone, made the Western District Chorus and Jazz Band this year. There were over eight hundred students that auditioned from many different schools in Western Massachusetts. All three also scored high enough to make the list for a second all-state audition in mid-December. If selected, they will go to a three-day rehearsal conference in Boston and perform at Symphony Hall. It is quite an honor to have East Hampton High School students representing our program in such a selective and competitive musical environment. Congratulations, and we wish them luck in their performance.
Just a couple more announcements run for me, and then I'm gonna ask Bailey to introduce her colleague who's here in the audience just so that everybody at home knows who's representing. But we want to thank Tim, who is helping to televise, tape for televising tonight's meeting. East Hampton Public Access Cable Stations five, nineteen, and twenty are always looking for volunteers to help. And if anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please contact Kathy at four one three two zero three one three six zero. So Bailey, I'd like to ask you to make an announcement, then I have one more before we go through the remainder. But would you just introduce your colleague who's here?
Sure. The other student representative that sits with me is Samantha Brand, and she's here today.
Sam, you're also a senior.
Yes, I am.
Yes, fantastic. Well, we look forward to Bailey and you sharing this role and this responsibility. And we, as we've said to her before, we'll say to you that we count on the student representative to be much more than just a token presence here. We need to know what students think about all matters that come before the school committee. It really helps us a great deal, and I trust that your classmates and students will take advantage of your ears and thoughts, and that you will be able to bring those to help us do a better job of serving the students. Because that's our goal, and our role as a school committee, is to advocate for what's best for students. To do that, we need to really know what students think and believe. So, thank you for being willing to take on that responsibility.
Thank you, excited to help.
All right. One other brief announcement that I say with just a tiny bit of regret, but effective at our first meeting in January of two thousand and thirteen, I'm going to turn over the reins of the chair of East Hampton School Committee to one of my colleagues. I'm going to remain a member of the school committee, an active member, and I fully intend to exercise all of my resources that I can to advocate, as I said before, on behalf of the students in the city. But I'm a big believer in rotation in office. I think a fresh perspective can bring new ideas and a new way of moving our agenda forward and realizing the strategic vision that we have for making the East Hampton Public Schools the best that they possibly can be. So we will have another meeting in December that I will chair, and then we'll make that transition into January. It will go seamlessly, but there's a wonderful group of people here, one of whom will step into this role and I'm sure do an even better job. So we look forward to that change coming ahead. Our next announcement is regarding correspondence.
Correspondence. We did receive a notice from the MIAA Sportsmanship Committee on their twelfth annual MIAA Student Sportsmanship Essay Multimedia Contest. They provided us a list of winners and honorable mentions. And our very own East Hampton High School, Kelly Avar, got second place in the literary category for her essay. So congratulations, Kelly.
Fantastic.
And then there was the annual notice from the Saint Patrick's Committee of Holyoke looking for, or looking to see if we're interested in marching in the parade again next year, the next. So that's just something we can think about.
We need to let them know by-
It looks like January twelfth.
Okay.
Can you let me know, please? I sent the paperwork back to them.
Right, yeah.
So by just, your next December meeting?
Yeah, we'll decide by the December meeting. It's fun, right, Mike?
The more the merrier.
Okay. That's it for correspondence?
That is, yes.
Okay. Just as a note, the essay that Kelly wrote is, is on, is part of our file. Is it also available? Can we have that attached to the website so that, could we link so that people-
If it isn't already?
If it isn't already, yeah. I'm assuming that it probably is. But to be, just to be sure, I think that's fantastic, another example of great student work by East Hampton. So then we have gifts. We have a huge, long list.
Quite the list.
Couple of events, so who's feeling full voiced tonight?
Mike usually does see the honors.
All right, so I'll move to accept with gratitude and appreciation the following gifts. From an anonymous donation, thirty-two pocket Constitution books for the EHS Advanced Placement U.S. History Class, valued at a hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Two hundred and fifty dollar donation from the East Hampton Police Department for the East Hampton High School Student Renaissance Program. One hundred dollars from Taylor Agency for the EHS Renaissance Program. Fifty dollars from A to Z Storage for the East Hampton High School Dog Show, and I do want to say that that was a wonderful dog show.
And a great emcee.
Well, thank you. I wasn't gonna go that far. Fifty dollars from OCP Incorporated for that dog show. A hundred dollars from the Kiwanis Club for the student, EHS Student Renaissance Program. One hundred dollars from Dalton La Valley American Legion Post two-two-four for the EHS Student Renaissance Program. Two hundred and fifty dollars from Florence Savings Bank for that same Student Renaissance Program. And a hundred dollars from GMTBP Doing Businesses Pizza Wings and Things for the EHS Student Renaissance Program. Fifty dollars from JPS Elastomeric's for the EHS Dog Show. Fifty dollars from Mantis Graphics for the EHS Dog Show. Fifty dollars from Big E for the EHS Dog Show. Five hundred dollars from Mason Donuts Doing Businesses Dunkin' Donuts for the EHS Student Renaissance Program. One hundred dollars from Regaldi and Walder Orthodontics for the EHS Student Renaissance Program. Fifty dollars from Fleury Lumber for the EHS Dog Show. Fifty dollars from East Hampton Machine and Tool for the EHS Dog Show. Fifty dollars from Fink and Paris Insurance for the EHS Student Renaissance Program. One hundred dollars from National Non-Wovens for the EHS Student Renaissance Program. One hundred dollars from Fleury Outdoor Power Products for the EHS Student Renaissance Program. Fifty dollars from East Hampton Savings Bank for the High School Dog Show. Fifty dollars from Northampton Veterinary Clinic for that same dog show, as well as fifty dollars from Florence Savings Bank for the dog show, and fifty dollars from Cernac Buick for the dog show. Fifty dollars from Taylor Agency for the dog show, and fifty dollars from Webster Fish Hook Restaurant for the dog show. Thank you very much.
I second that motion.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Bailey, would you do the listeners the favor, and Sam, you can chime in on this too, of telling a little bit about what the, we know the dog show, but the Renaissance Program may be less familiar to some of our audience.
From my understanding, the Renaissance Program is a way that students who are doing good in school, who get As and Bs and are on the honor roll, or students who have improved a great deal over the year, we get these little cards that say Improving, Soaring, or Golden Eagle. And with that card, we get some special privileges. We get to go to this little Renaissance party down in the cafeteria where we get to have a snack, get out of class. And we get to hang out with our friends and possibly win some prizes.
And your fellow classmates nominate the winners each month? Is that how that works?
No, I'm not exactly sure how that works.
It's based on their grades.
Based on academic performance.
It's based on attendance.
And attendance as well.
Yeah, it is taken into account, attendance.
So it's an affirmation of sort of the best of what school is about. It's coming and doing your work and working hard and doing well. So, great, super. Thanks very much. We next come to the, and by the way, we are going to do more. We have vowed, Superintendent and I had a conversation about this, and I think, who had the suggestion about doing a better job of giving more recognition to all the wonderful people who make these contributions? We're gonna get-
It was a mutual decision, I think.
Okay, I thought, I thought there was a third party, somebody other than me came up with it. But I think we want to be sure that the folks in the community know how much we appreciate all the businesses and individuals, the difference that you make, the spirit of giving. We are clearly facing an unusually difficult financial time, and any effort that we can make to recognize the contributions that people share, we will do so. We're gonna try to have recognition on the website, so that if you're able to make contributions to any of the school programs, we'll be sure that you are publicly recognized. If you don't want to be recognized, we'll just list it as an anonymous gift, that's fine. But I think it's important for the people of East Hampton to know that a lot of folks are willing to give in support of the schools, and we wanna thank you and sort of pay it forward back to you that way. So we're working on how that'll happen, but we hope that that'll roll out in the, in the next month or two. We come next to the public speak section, and that is when anyone who's here who would like to speak on a matter that's not already on the agenda, feel free to come forward at this time. Not all at once. Okay. Yeah, come with your ideas too. We just had, you know, we had this election, and it would be really useful to get people's ideas about how we, we address the path forward. So don't, don't hesitate. Lots of folks came to speak about the ballot issue before. Don't stop coming. You had good thoughts then, keep coming, and bring your good thoughts now, because the hard work really begins. Okay, so we'll move to matters for discussion. Subcommittee reports?
Nothing from finance.
Okay, policy review?
No report.
Okay, terrific. Then we're back to career and educational services.
It would be collaborative in educational services, and there's no report.
That was college. That's what CS was when I was in college. It was the career, sorry. Okay, you're on.
The Student Council is having Mr. Stratton come from Chartwells. He wants to talk to us about school lunches, and the students have a lot of questions for him as well. The Key Club is beginning to sell Kiwanis trees for Christmas. That will be starting this weekend, I believe. And Create a Dream is also going to be starting up.
What's that?
It's where the Key Club, we raise money, and we go out and buy Christmas gifts for families who can't afford them. It's an awesome, awesome thing to do.
Yeah, nice. So, that's all I have. There's a big football game tonight, right? I think that's where Bonnie is.
Starting in a half an hour?
We're going, okay.
Keep him overview.
Is there anything other than that?
Who are they playing?
Pathfinder.
Pathfinder, Enoch Roy.
Oh, Pathfinder.
Playoffs for the Super Bowl.
All right.
We're going to go Eagles.
Other discussion, other matters for discussion. So Superintendent's report, twenty-first Community Century Learning Center grants.
That's right. I asked Chris Taggart if he would come this evening and talk about the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Center grants that we receive in collaboration with the Collaborative. And they fund some wonderful after-school programs in our district. We've had the grant for, is it three years, Chris?
Five years.
Five years. So Chris, I'm gonna have you come up to the podium now and give the committee and our community a little more background on these wonderful grants and what services and programs they provide for our students.
Okay. Thank you for having me. As you said, I'm with the Collaborative for Educational Services. And essentially, we go after federal funding that is labeled as Twenty-First Century Community Learning Center after-school programs that the state manages. So it's federal funding managed by the state. And we apply each year, and we've been lucky and been competitive and have four of these programs in East Hampton. So there's a program at the Whitebrook Middle School called the After Zone, and that's in a five-year cycle, and we're in the fifth year right now. And the prospect for keeping that program going will include the state coming in and taking a hard look at the program. And then we are judged, and that's thirty percent of the decision on whether we might get refunded for another three or four-year cycle. And then we write a grant and put multiple years' worth of data, because we collect a lot of data for these programs on academic and social, emotional growth, and submit that to the state and compete against a bunch of other school districts or nonprofit agencies that are also running this, and try to win another grant cycle. So that's where Whitebrook is. Then we have two programs at the elementary school level, one at Peppin Center. Officially, it was really for Peppin, but we also serve some center students. And one at Maple Elementary. And they are, they were on a three-year cycle. Last year was their last year, and we went through that process Whitebrook is about to go through. And I'm happy to say, even though there was a delay in notification on whether they would be running this year that delayed the startup that normally would be in September, Peppin and Maple are two of sixteen programs that exist in the state at that level now. And it was stiff competition, it was stressful, and we got every dollar that we asked for. So that, I think, is a good appraisal of where those two programs stand. They're considered promising practices sites now. The department from the state level will ask them to mentor and to be peer, you know, leaders amongst the younger programs across the state. So we've got some excellent site coordinators there, Marcia Levy and Ronnie Buchsbaum. So I'm happy to say that, and I'm very proud of that. And then the, we have a high school program, which is this innovative piece that the state put into place. High school programs, that's, that's not, it doesn't have a lot of history behind it, and it's harder to do. It's harder to get high school students to come. And our data going into year three is getting better each year, and we've got a lot of great partnerships with the district, working with Ms. Gilfeather, Superintendent Follins B., and Principal Perone. We are able to let students recover credits, whether they're elective or for credit, during the school year and the summer. There are work internships that students can get into that allow them to get credits. It's all based on attendance, and it uses the school-to-work track that's already in place at the school as the expectations for that. And then the premise of all four programs really is enrichment activities. So essentially, after students are done at all the age levels with a homework centerpiece or some sort of academic skill building that we might partner with the school district on, like MCAS support at Whitebrook, they go into hands-on learning opportunities, project-based opportunities where they might be building up a shed, or we have an automotive class at the high school now. We're gonna bring in driver's ed. We've worked that out, and Jerry Rousher is working on that. That should be good, and all sorts of things. And we're open to visits. We run thirty-two weeks of the school year. We run summer programs at all the programs, and those run from four to six weeks in length. We do pre- and post-surveys, and we measure students' growth on academic outcomes. So at Whitebrook, we have math outcomes in accordance to their lowest MCAS scores, and we try to recruit the kids, the youth that need most improvement in math to take up a majority of the slots in that program, so that when they go into these enrichment activities after the homework support or skill building, that even if it's a carpentry class, that's actually got some natural inlets for math opportunities, that we build into the lesson plans state standards that are most closely associated with the low CPI scores. You know, two or three state standards or national standards, whenever that comes around, into those lesson plans, so that those students are learning to address their needs in math in a different way that engages them, so that they stay with us for the year and build up the hours. We want them to come multiple days of the week, not once a week. And the final thing I'll say is, these programs aren't meant to serve the entire school population at each school. We're really seeking to, depending on budget size, forty to sixty youth in afternoon, hopefully, they come two, three, four days a week. And then we get most of them to come back for the summer, and then we get them to come back next grade level. And so then we build up multi-year data, which can be really profound when reporting back to the state.
Just a question, the, the elementary programs, you said you were able to get funded, I know it was late. Multiple-year funding?
Three-year, another three-year cycle.
Excellent.
And there's three levels to, once you're through with an original grant cycle, we're in a third year of a four-year cycle at the high school. That's an original grant cycle. Whitebrook's in their fifth year original. If they get through and they compete, and we make it to the promising practices level, then there's another level after that that Maple and Peppin can go for after three years called the exemplary level. And that would be another three-year cycle if this is still in play and the federal government keeps this going. And then after that, the final highest level is called the demonstration site. We have two of those in our network, but they're in other towns.
So you're aiming for the prominent practices, recognition for the high school and the middle school programs now?
It's a strange setup. Promising practices is like a novice-level exemplary, because every year, the department changes how long a grant cycle is. So because Maple and Peppin only had a three-year cycle, they're not actually being held to the exemplary level. Whitebrook has a five-year cycle, so they'll skip promising practices and go to exemplary in the middle of the pack, because they should be better after five years than a program that was on a three-year cycle. But essentially, yes.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I just have, of course, one question. Did you say these were state-funded or federally funded?
Federal, it's federal money managed by the state.
All right, so it's both, okay. So the state decides whether we get the federal money or not?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are all students that are interested at the elementary level able to be a part of the after-school program? Is it, I know in years past, it was an issue where you couldn't have everybody in the program that wanted to be in the program.
That's, that's, that's the one limitation, is that, again, they're not meant to serve the entire student population, not even half of the population, unless the budget were to grow or we were to find a big partnership. We've got a couple benchmarks that we need to work with that come straight with this project. We're supposed to serve fifty percent or more students on the Free and Reduced Lunch Program per program. So there's that. So even though there might be a population of parents that can pay, if we boost the population and we drop below fifty percent Free and Reduced Lunch Programs, we start to injure or hurt our chances to get that promising practices or exemplary, because that's looked at after the grant cycle. We could even get some negative feedback or critique from the state during the cycle for that at the year-end review. So we're looking to serve a core group of students, forty to sixty in afternoon, having them come multiple days of the week, and having them build up the hours during the year.
And Chris and I have had some ongoing discussions about how to, to create, develop a parallel program so that we had another program that was available to all students. And clearly, that was one of the items on the override list, an after-school coordinator, because that's exactly what we would need in order to put this into place. But as a stopgap measure, our elementary schools are now looking at a commercial program, a fee-based commercial program, so that there's more access for parents who want after-school programs. We'd like to be able to provide them for all parents who want them in elementary and middle schools. And we certainly have had many conversations about that. But we are so excited about the programs that these grants have brought to our district. I think we're unique among a number of districts in Massachusetts, and Chris certainly has put a lot of effort into it, so thank you very much, and thank you for coming tonight to talk about it.
Thank you. I invite all of you to come visit any of the programs at any point. I can get my contact info, or you have it, actually.
Yes.
So please visit.
Okay.
Okay.
Send it out. Thank you, Chris. And now we're gonna have Shirley Gilfeather come and talk about some of the other intervention programs that we have during the school day. So what Chris was talking about are academic and social-emotional programs for our students after school, but we also want to be able to provide interventions for students, particularly academic interventions during the school day, for those students who may need that extra support. So Shirley's been doing a great job in the last two years, looking for programs, thinking about how we could implement these programs during the school day. And so I wanted her to talk about that, because it's another effort that we're putting into place for our students.
Wait a minute, Shirley always gives a test after she's talked.
She might.
I was waiting for the open response question to practice.
So take your notes.
I don't know, I'm getting picked on already. I gotta note, I gotta note that I can only speak for two minutes, but I think that's absolutely, virtually impossible. But I'm going to, I'm going to talk about just some of the things that were either new this year or that we're anticipating to include this year or going into next year. Because I think I've spoken, and Chris did an excellent job speaking about the after-school programs already in place. But a couple of things that I think you should be aware of that we're working on. One is, first of all, I want to publicly thank a literacy volunteer that we have. We've been very blessed that a, an educator who lives in the community and who has retired contacted me and offered her services. I thought perhaps there might be some grant money, but things were cut a little lower again this year, of course. And this individual said, no, I'm willing to do it as a volunteer. And so we've been very lucky to have Carla Katz serving as a volunteer at the middle school. And Carla has been coming in and doing some tutoring with our literacy needy students at the middle school level. So we thank Carla, and that kind of volunteerism is what we need in these fiscal times.
And Shirley, if I could just interject for a moment, Carla's been very active in our school district for a number of years. I believe she was on the school council at Whitebrook, and among other things. So it's wonderful to have her come and be a volunteer for us, and she brings a wealth of background experience.
Yes, very pleased. So a couple of things that we're, we're working on. First of all, through some very creative hours of looking at Title I and Title II funds, we were able to do a slight increase in the time that Tracy Pullen, who's working with mathematics at the middle school, is putting in some hours. We were able to up her hours slightly, and that gave her about five more hours a week, which was, is, you know, every hour is so precious to us, so that's one thing we're working on. A futuristic piece is that we are in the process of working on the program of studies right now. We're looking for the possibility of having high school students serve as interns and help with some tutoring at the elementary and the middle school levels. Again, because we'd love to have coaches at those levels, that's fiscally impossible. And so where we can have that assistance in that level would be helpful. We also are doing, we've been able, again, with some of the funding, academic support grant funding, again, in reallocating some funds. For example, we have worked with Chris to take the after-school program and what we call academic support or MCAS support, and we've tried to bring these programs together. So we used to run, for example, at the high school, an MCAS support group after school, and we ran the jump program after school. And it didn't take too long to look and say, we're running two parallel things, why are we doing this? And so with good conversation with Chris and his staff, we were able to do some combining of that. And so we've eliminated the after-school program that we were paying with grant-funded. And now we've started to do, which is, I think, what the superintendent was referring to, that's the most innovative this year, is that we've started to provide services in the school day for students that need it. And we had great difficulty with getting high school students to come after school for a variety of some very legitimate reasons sometimes, and sometimes not so legitimate. And so what we did at the beginning of this year, and we plan to continue for other parts of the year, is in the early fall, there is an MCAS retest for mathematics. Students in the grades eleven and twelve who have not passed the MCAS need to take a retest. And what we were able to do, again, by moving some funding around here and consolidating, we're able to bring in Ann Vanderburg, who's a wonderful math tutor. We brought her into the day, and she did a specialized program. We isolated those students that needed the support, looked at their schedules, found out what times in the day would, they had elective classes. And we did a four-week intervention where she came and worked two blocks, so two eighty-four-minute periods in the day. She had one group in one block, one group in the other, and she came on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. So these students got eight eighty-four-minute interventions. Now, that doesn't sound like a lot, but when you're targeting, which is exactly what we did, we ran the item analysis of those students' performance on MCAS. And I sat down with Ann, and we looked clearly at what the students needed. And so she went in and provided tutoring, directed tutoring for those students on exactly what they needed for that retest. And we've got our fingers crossed that those students will be successful. Doesn't do anything to our PPI, by the way, but it does. I had to get a PPI in there someplace. Doesn't do anything for the PPI, but what it does do, it shows our commitment to these students in continuing to pass the MCAS, even if they failed it the first time, and the fact that they then are becoming more eligible towards graduation.
And you might give dis- And you might give just a couple of highlights from the sort of summary she gave us of the tutoring experience. I thought it was just wonderful.
Yeah, it was wonderful that Anne afterwards gave a nice little narrative, one, one-page, two-page kind of follow-up.
You got the Anne Van story.
The Anne Van story, yes. And what was wonderful about it is the way that the students responded to, to the work, that they were very serious about it, they understood that, that this was an attempt to help them to be successful. They came in, they came in prepared to work, you know, they really, really put the effort out. And, you know, again, I think a lot of that has to do with Anne and how she presents herself as well. She's a real gift to us in supporting us.
And what came across in her narrative is how much she enjoyed it and how fulfilling it was for her as well.
Yeah, and she's very anxious to continue to work with us, which we are with her funding being available. Another thing that we did this, this year new is that we instituted into the Program of Studies last year, a course called High School Preparation for Algebra. What we did is, once again, we took the data from last year, finding students who, at the eighth grade level, were having serious problems in mathematics, and we did not feel we're going to be successful in high school algebra. But rather than giving them a pre-algebra course that would be a full semester in length, 84 minutes for the full semester, we wanted to do something, again, more targeted, we wanted to do something that was a little faster and was not going to be eating up, so to speak, a whole block of study. And so we put in a, a program, High School Prep for, for Algebra. It is the Alex Mathematics Program primarily. So the students, the idea is that the students would go into that class, spend a portion of the 84 minutes working on Alex, and another portion working with the teacher who's in that classroom.
You might want to explain Alex.
Yes, Alex Math is an online mathematics program. It's meant to be a, it can be used for credit recovery, but it also can be used for this kind of targeted assistance. And the students, there is actually a course in Alex called High School Preparation for Algebra. And the students begin in Alex by taking a diagnostic, and then that diagnostic, once they've completed it, the program through artificial intelligence sets up a targeted, individualized program for that student. So it's having that student work on the areas of weakness. And yet, 84 minutes is a long time for anybody to be working on a software program, so that's the reason we said to the teacher, split the class in half. Half of them are working on Alex, half with the teacher, and then switch. So they're using two interventions, one online and one the direct tutoring from, from the teacher. Those students then, that are doing that this first semester, it's a first semester course, they're doing it the last block of the day on what's called an A-B schedule. So these students take that A-day and they take, for example, physical education the other day. So it's an A-day, B-day for that semester, so it's really acting in length like a quarter class, okay? And again, they're, the second semester, they're registered then for Algebra I, okay? And the intention, we'll have to wait for the data, would be that hopefully we're helping them get a jumpstart in being successful in the algebra as an intervention. We're hoping to do more of these in-school kinds of supports next year in terms of the Program of Studies. In the past, there's been programs offered to students, you know, if you didn't do well in MCAS, you could take this class. Surprising, and I know, hold on to your seats, there was not a huge rush on the part of students to take those courses, and so we're changing our thought pattern here a little bit and saying, this is not going to be a democracy, that if you haven't passed MCAS and you need that remediation and extra support, you will be assigned to a class for MCAS preparation. How that class will be put in, whether it'll be A-day, B-day, or just a quarter, or how that will be worked out is still being dealt with at the, at the high school level. Another one that I want to mention is, two more, one is cable television. I've been working with Kathy Lynch, and we have been talking, actually, since I arrived last year, about some ways of using cable TV to help promote education in the community. And one initiative that we're working on is a literacy initiative that will have students at the middle school and the high school act as, as a part of a community service project on their part, you know, Key Club and, and other honor societies. Students to be able to come forward and read either fiction or nonfiction information on cable-access television, and so that there's a read-allowed kind of process going on, so that parents can tune into that, perhaps, instead of some of the other things that are on television. So they're getting exposure to good literature read by students, for students. So that's one piece that we're working on. Another piece is, for example, Joan Schaefer, who's our instructional coach at the elementary level, which we wish we had at all the other, other levels, is, has done Parent Night, some of you may be aware of, recently, talking to parents about mathematics and what they could do to support mathematics at home. And she got some attendance in the evening session, and she did another session in the day for those who weren't able to attend in the evening. And so once I heard about that, I said, hmm, we need to do this on cable access. Then it can be repeated, and parents can, you know, tap into that at their convenience. And so we want to use the cable access as a way to reach out to parents for a variety of things. Love to do a series for parents to help them understand the connection between students doing homework and academic performance. There is such a high correlation as to whether or not students are successful by whether or not they are attempting or even trying to do homework. And, you know, I'd like to have parents learn about that as well. So some really good opportunities that we think are coming up to be able to showcase to parents, so Kathy and I are anxious to continue working on that, and you should see the fruits of some of that labor, I would hope, this spring and then further into the next year. And the last piece is Khan Academy. Khan Academy, and that's, for those of you taking notes, is K-H-A-N Academy. Khan Academy, you can do a Google for that, is a wonderful resource online, free, of course, that has a little mini lessons in a variety of areas, mathematics certainly, but in social sciences as well, the sciences, a variety of different pieces. And it's an excellent support for students in terms of, of helping them when they don't understand something, they get home at night and they don't know it, and the parent says, you know, I, I don't understand that math, I never understood it when I was in school, et cetera. So recently, to really support the Khan Academy piece, I went into the high school classes before the holidays, made arrangements with the teachers to go into the classes and to talk to each class about Khan Academy. Now, in the case of some of the teachers, some of the teachers had already introduced their class to Khan Academy, and it already required them to do some Khan Academy at home, provided they had computer access. And so I was able to talk to them about what they saw as the benefits or, you know, what they thought of Khan Academy. For other programs, other classes, I was able to showcase Khan Academy to them and suggest to them that this be a source of where they go when they have difficulty at night with the homework. And what I provided for each of them was a sheet, I found out from the teacher ahead of time, what they were currently working on in math, and then I went in and did a sheet for that class. So if it was Algebra I and they were working on similarity of triangles or whatever it happened to be, I was then able to show them where in Khan Academy they could go to get support for that. So when I was talking to them about it, I could hand them a sheet that they could go home that night and practice with some of the Khan Academy to see how useful it would be. So we're trying to be very creative with no funds to, you know, move things around, shake things around, consolidate things, and be as creative as we can in providing interventions to students because we know we have great needs. Questions?
I think anybody, I mean, there's a, there's a, there's a lot that's great there. People should go take a look at the Khan Academy. It's a great way.
It's phenomenal.
It's a great way to fit the classroom for students, even those students who aren't in need necessarily of specialized support. There's a lot of discussion, so this could be an inroad into the expanded use of this resource, and it's not perfect for everybody in all circumstances, but it's, it's great, you know?
It's another tool in the toolbox.
It's another tool.
Another way to enrichment as well.
Right, and the originator of it is, is a character, too, so he's, he's worth spending a visit with.
Thank you, Shirley.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate it. Okay, now we have Andy Paquette and the results of operations.
You have in your packet an update as of October 31st. Some things that are, to bring to your attention would be primarily, one thing that's not necessarily good news, it's that when we go through, as we're doing as a regular practice of looking at our out-of-district placement tuitions, we are now up to, projected, all things being equal, $71,000 over on our out-of-district placement tuition. So as our normal practice, we'll be monitoring that throughout the year, see where things are regarding our revolving account, circuit breaker, and a special education tuition revolving account, and also any funds that could be potentially freed up in the local appropriation, knock on wood for a warm winter. But all things going according to plan, we're looking at about a $71,000 overage in our special education tuitions. But other than that, everything is running according to plan as of October 31st.
And that's strictly the special education out-of placement?
Yes.
And I think it was brought to light that we had a student from out of state?
Correct.
And that's the majority of that?
It's about half of that. Others are students that we are putting into placements, either collaborative or some private, private placement, part, I say part-time, there's some that are like 45-day placement, I think, where, you know, potentially going to be out, but, you know, working to see whether or not it's a right fit. Some of that in that $71,000, there are estimates based on some things that are going on and determining whether or not we can meet the needs of students in district.
Anne Knapp, our special education director, is looking at some of the out-of-district placements and at the programs we currently have in our district, and also thinking about next year, are there ways that we can alter some of what we currently have and bring some of these students back into the district, which would be a savings to us. So we're, we're trying to find the extra funds in every way we can.
Andy, just a little thing, some of the supplies, like the high school supplies and the system supplies, like their available balance now is negative. Why would that be as of October 31st?
It could be either purchase orders that need to be canceled, that are, you know, they've already, it's a double entry so that the bills have come in and paid, and whether or not the purchase order is still encumbered, or they, they're going to need to do budget transfers.
I see.
You know, so theoretically, you'd like to see all their operating expenses spent, you know, so that they're ready for the year, so it very well could be budget transfers that need to occur to zero those out from other accounts that they have.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Andy.
Thursday is December 6th.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Sorry. I didn't mean to send you off. Oh, I could've done it right there. All right, so we have some matters for action.
Yes, we do. We actually, we've got to kind of explain this a little bit. You got a new copy of the minutes from November 13th, just, there's just a correction that needed to be made from the copy that you got in your electronic package. The payroll motions are now, motion by Ingram, seconded by Katusic. That's just a correction.
Right.
For both payroll. And then the date was corrected to November 13th. Those are the only two changes between this new copy and then your electronic copy. So given that, so motion to approve the minutes of the November 13th school committee meeting with stipulation to hold executive session minutes until matters are resolved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Epstein.
And the extension, Julie Nervett, there's a warrant and payroll?
Yep. There's a little bit of an explanation on the payroll because it's a negative amount that you're going to approve. So the payroll that we approved last time in our last meeting was dated the 15th, was approved on the 13th, then an error was found, so they corrected it prior to the payroll being issued on the 15th. So the motion tonight is to approve that correction. So, move to approve the school payroll dated November 15th, 2012, in the amount of negative
Second.
Motion made to approve the school payroll dated 15th, November 2012, in the amount of negative $22,284.10. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think there was one. There's one more here. Nope, that's the same one. Okay. Do we need to do this one?
I think that's the previous.
Oh, right, that's the correction, sorry. I got it.
Why don't we do the pink?
Just to be sure.
Yeah. Move to approve the school payroll dated November 29th, 2012, in the amount of $442,767.67.
Second.
Motion to approve the school payroll dated November 29th, 2012, in the amount of All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated November 29th, 2012, in the amount of $437,948.16.
Second.
Motion seconded to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 29th, November 2012, in the amount of $437,948.16. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
And that's it.
Okay. So we have a school choice opening proposal?
Is that in your packet? Oh, there it is.
Right, yeah, it's, yes, right? It's for White Brook Middle School, correct?
Eighth grade.
Eighth grade. Do you have any background on that, Nancy Forrest, or is it?
I don't.
Okay.
It's a request to open a slot.
And we believe we have the room?
Yes.
All right. Any questions, or I guess I should have taken a motion first, I apologize.
Move that we approve a single school choice opening in grade eight at White Brook Middle School.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve a school choice opening at White Brook Middle School, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Before we adjourn, Bailey, you and I forgot that on the 6th of December, everyone here is invited to join you and me at Williston for an East Hampton High, Williston, North Hampton, we the people showcase.
Yes.
Correct?
Yep.
You'll be serving as a judge, and we need judges because it's a busy night for lots of folks who were lined up to come last time when Peter Gunn, Weatherman, never to be Weatherman again, had to cancel something just before the Blue Skies came out. So all school committee members, I'm assuming you're all coming unless you decline publicly now, I'll tell you, no, please let me know.
What day?
The 6th, is that Thursday? Am I right? I'm terrible at dates.
Yes, I believe it is.
Yes, so it's Thursday, December 6th, at 6:30 at the Reed Center at Williston, and if you get, send an email to Kelly Brown at East Hampton High School or to Peter Gunn at Williston, North Hampton, we would be delighted to give you the information, and it'd be wonderful to have you. I think you're going to see more great work by East Hampton High School students and great collaboration between our two, that's a class as we get ready to go to the state competition in January, so.
Before we adjourn, maybe this can be on the December meeting about a school building update?
Oh, yeah.
Good idea.
Okay. Just a couple of things we have to talk about, furniture and equipment. And, oh, and I do have to check with a couple of you about your names on the plaque that will be on the building, just want to make sure we get the name of what you wanted on the plaque. And then, let's see here. Yeah, that's it, so.
Okay.
That's the next meeting.
That would be great, yeah, I meant to ask for that tonight, so thank you for the reminder. Okay, anything else, folks?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, drive safe.